I'm gonna call to order the Maplewood Budget Work Session.
Let me broadcast just a second Barry, okay? I'm gonna broadcast. We're live now.
Okay, roll call please.
Mayor Greenberg.
Here.
Mayor or Councilmember Crater.
Here.
Councilmember Phillips.
Here.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Here.
Councilmember Wood.
Here.
Councilmember Fockingham.
Here.
Councilmember Pardini.
Here.
Mayor Greenberg of Quorum is present.
Okay, first item is the Maplewood Aquatic Center. And if you would like to address that, I think the memorandum's pretty straightforward, but hopefully everyone got a chance to review it.
Yeah, I just put that brief intro in there because we had a lot of people assuming that June 1st was the date. That's actually more for private type pools. So June 15th is the date. We still do not have the opening restrictions. Have a pretty good idea of what they're gonna be and we're planning accordingly. If I had to guess, and it's just a guess, I believe it'll be 25% capacity. We may even open up a little under that just to make sure we can manage properly because our pool capacity is 1,400. It's based on deck space and we have a very large pool deck. So I know St. Charles opened this weekend and some of those pools started around 200 people. So we're either gonna go add capacity what they give us or go under. But I pulled some numbers out from past years. And there are some weeks there where we averaged as many as 600 people in a day, so we wanna make sure we wanna make sure we have our, the ability to have our residents, meaning Maplewood and Richmond Heights residents have the ability to get the pool as opposed to having it be at capacity. I believe with some of the other cities that close their pools down, I think Ellisville did five weeks ago. I believe we're gonna, it would be a pretty good demand, so we're gonna look at how many guests you can bring. Whether we're gonna have pool furniture out on the, on the on the concrete or on the deck. We're looking at keeping, possibly keeping the concession stand closed. Limiting it to season passes and value passes only, so then that way we don't have to handle cash. We're gonna set the Plexi glass up. We're gonna get a cleaning schedule that would be approved by the county. I'm gonna have one of my Public Works employees up there. Nearly nonstop. One of our summer helpers, it'll be a lot cheaper than having to pay Midwest Pool to clean the pool, for example, repeatedly. So we're gonna take all the necessary safety protocols as per the county's directive. But to start off, I didn't want, I wanted to make sure the council is in agreement with trying to at least limit who gets in to residents only at first if, and I believe it will be demonstrated that we can add on as the year, as the year goes on. We would go on to Brentwood. And the reason I propose Brentwood is they were a partial park cooperative member. The next would be Rock Hill. And Rock Hill would be followed by that because they don't have access to a pool. And they've been, they've had this resident only rate in the past. And then I would go to the two wards in the city of St. Louis. And the only reason I would go to them last is because they do have access to a pool where Rock Hill doesn't. So that was the thinking, in case anyone's wondering where I came up with that, that order. And I just wanted to make sure the council understands what we're proposing and I wanna make sure you're in agreement. Anthony, what would that look like for, would it be a first come, first serve? And once you reach capacity, lining up outside and wait for someone to leave, what would that look like? That's exactly what it would look like. We would, we would be counting people as they come and counting people as they go.
Okay.
Go do a count. And again, I didn't wanna get into the business of having people wait outside and and I, and I really don't want residents to not be able to get into their own pool. You know, I'm not knocking Kirkwood or Ellisville, but they, they decided to close their pools a while ago and, and you know, we wanna make sure our residents have first crack at it. At the same time, we all obviously wanna open it to as many people as possible as well. There's no reason to have an empty pool there. And we also wanna bring in as much revenue as possible. We're also thinking because it's opening later, we could close later. We, the competition pool can be heated. We've done it in the past and we do it usually this time of year to get the lifeguard training in because sometimes it can be bitter cold in there. And so, again, we're, we're trying to make it is, we're trying to get as much use out of it as possible. But there's many people, but protecting our resident interests and by that I mean Richmond Heights as well.
I guess, I was curious if the county doesn't really provide any guidelines or even if they do, how do we enforce social distancing in a pool scenario? And is there some sort of waiver that, you know, people have to sign or any sort of temperature check type thing that we would still use even if the county doesn't require it?
We're checking on the temperature. There's, keep in mind, there's two different groups I'm talking to. I'm talking to the city manager groups. I'm also talking to the park director groups and we're coming up with some, some ideas on that, whether we wanna do the, the temperature check. The social distancing we can do really is, is ask people to operate. I mean, we're not gonna bring, obviously, officers or anything like that. And kinda similar thing we do with our parks when people are using them when they're not supposed to. We just politely go out there and ask them to move. If we have the same people over and over again, then we look at possibly suspending, you know, their membership for a day or however long we need to if people are outright ignoring our, our orders. And St. Louis County Health Department is the one that actually does most of that enforcement. If it becomes a problem, we could just rely on them as well.
Will, will we have someone separate who's like that's sort of their job, so we're not relying on lifeguards to also do that? Or that seems maybe to make sense since there's
We haven't decided that yet, but if there was gonna be someone, it would probably be the pool manager. Manager on duty. I've met her. I wish I could think of her name. It escapes me now, but she's, she seems very qualified to handle that and she's looking forward to your first year, kind of a year to start it. But we could have her do that if that's possible. I think it needs to be somebody from authority or they have head lifeguards as well. There's a series of commands within the lifeguard and there are lifeguards that could do that if the pool manager's not there.
Okay, are we requiring ma, like face coverings for adults?
We could require him. This is all discussions. We haven't come up with this. I'll get you guys a final list. I just wanted to let, at least touch base with you to let you know where we're headed. The idea would be to wear the face masks in. And then once they're at the pool, obviously, they're not gonna wear them when they're swimming. But if, if they're walking in and out of the pool, we're gonna request that they do that.
What about Is there any discussion of liability if contact tracing shows that a case is spread in the bathroom of the pool?
I don't know. We could talk with John Hessel about that, but as long as we're following our, our cleaning protocols, I think we'll be fine. We're gonna, we're gonna try to make sure we go in there on a repeated basis. We're even gonna close them to go through and meet all the county's guidelines.
Is everybody bringing their own chairs? I noticed that that was in here. I think that's one way of
You're, you're totally correct, Councilmember Wood. That's the whole, we would obviously like to leave chairs out there. But then we're required to clean them. If they bring their own chairs in, then, then they, they take the potentially contaminated chair with them when they leave and then it takes, it creates less exposure for the city. And that's the only reason we would basically for this year, just keep all of our lawn furniture, essentially shelve it for lack of a better word. If we did not do concessions, we would still allow people to go in and bring their own food and eat within the concession area. And then we would clean that every other hour.
And I know you're, I know we still don't have guidelines, so a lot of this may be addressed, then just another thing. If it's not addressed, will we sort of create spaces for people to put in that are the distance so that, so that we're not relying on people to go in and create their own space? We're saying here's a space that's this far apart from this space and you can put your chair in this thing, I think.
We haven't, we haven't
If it's not covered in whatever the county comes up with.
Yeah, well, if we need to do, we can create whatever rules we want.
Right.
Obviously, if it's a family, we would not have a family.
Right, no, right. I understand there'll be groups of people to gather, but maybe so we're not, so that we are sort of creating those spaces. You know, I can, we can all go and, you know, that's big enough to accommodate a family.
Yeah, I don't wanna, I don't wanna Lake of the Ozarks situation. You guys see that photo this, this weekend, the Lake of the Ozarks? We're not gonna
And I think we're all, we all have that on the brain.
Yeah, we're not gonna, no, it won't be like that, but Councilmember Schmidt, we'll, we'll definitely look in. We're looking into that and really what it is, is every pool, and there's quite a few that are opening. We're all kinda getting, basically share similar guidelines and see how it works. And we're also monitoring now St. Charles County is, is going right now and how they're doing it. I even talked to Teresa the other day and I think I might even run out there and take a peek this weekend and see how it's going and see what they have. Even if I'm just the, kind of the weird guy peeking outside, I'll let them know who I am. I don't need to go in. But I'm gonna try to see how these things are managed and we're, we're kinda using, we'll use them as a guinea pig for a while to see what works and what doesn't work. But we'll take any step necessary to ensure we limit any exposure from public to the public or from employees in, in the public back and forth. And we're, and like I said, when you walk in, we're gonna have an auto scanner that will basically be scanning at all times. You'll basically swipe your card. There'll be no cash. It'll either be, it'll either be a a season pass or a, a value daily pass. And, and we're gonna, we gotta figure out what legally we can leave open within the restaurant rooms. We believe we may be able to close portions of the restrooms off. Because again, the idea is not, the idea is kind of to come prepared and then leave. Less, less time in that bathroom, the better. And we're waiting on the cleaning protocols, but that's why I'll probably have a summer helper there full time, cleaning constantly.
And can you remind us real quick what some of, so Ellisville and Kirkwood have decided not to open at all?
Well, Ellisville did probably six weeks ago.
I mean, is there any discussion of, I mean, I think that we're still looking at another tiny bump in June? Is there any discussion of waiting until after that?
No, we have to basically get moving. The issue to get the pool moving, it's a, it's not a process. You can just start and stop. We need to notify Midwest Pool to get the lifeguards ready. We have to make sure we have the appropriate amount of people. If for some reason there's some sort of bump in the county decides to close that, then, then we could. Or if the council decides we could close it, we could. But at this point, I don't know that you're gonna get much
Just is there a discussion of starting July 1st instead of Ju- June 15?
Is there?
I'm asking you, is there, is there a discussion within the
No. No, actually, they've come out, they came out, I think at whatever day I wrote that memo, it was either Thursday or Friday, and they actually said June 15th is the date.
I mean, that's the day that you can open, right? It's not the day you have to open?
Correct.
Keep in mind, as far as the maintenance of the bathrooms, are you gonna hire two people, male and a female to
We may actually close the bathrooms for a period of time to go in and do a deep, we basically have a similar regimen each day. There's even talk of closing the pool for an hour and going through and cleaning everything. And that's where the chairs, you know, where we're coming up with not even having chairs. Because I mean, we're trying to take away the ability to have to do that. But there's no doubt our bathrooms will probably have to be cleaned at least, or closed rather, at least a couple of times, if not multiple times throughout the day, while we would go in and do an actual deep cleaning.
Do we have any idea? The county hasn't indicated when they're gonna release their guidelines, have they?
I've heard Friday.
This Friday?
I heard that the day they were gonna release the opening date, was the day that I heard that too. So that came true. I, I don't know. But once I get those guidelines, we'll start formulating that with different park directors. I'll be talking with different city managers. We'll get together, find out who's doing what. And then we'll get something to you, to the council to make sure you're, you're comfortable with it, but
Then we're having another work session next week, right?
Correct.
So if we needed to discuss again, I guess
Oh yeah, absolutely. But we're trying to, you know, we're trying to plan to let people know, because we're getting a lot of calls on it. And also, we, I, I, like I said, I pulled the capacity numbers. And I, I just wanna, there, there may be some case, some time there where people won't necessarily be able to get in, but we're trying to you know, trying to make sure our residents at least have at least first crack at getting into the pool. Because we believe, we believe there'll be a pretty good demand for it.
Another thought maybe would be too, if you're talking about closing it at a certain period to clean is you know, not let people stay all day, is to say there's two sessions to allow more people to utilize it, like a morning and an afternoon session perhaps. And whatever, so that more of our can access.
If we get into capacity issues, that's, we'll definitely do that. And keep in mind, when, when, when we tell people what they're doing, we're gonna make it very clear that, you know, this is kind of a fluid process, you know.
Right.
But the bottom line is if a resident, let's just say theoretically, to make it easy, pays for 10 weeks. If for some reason we're closed a week, you know, we would, we would, we would prorate that. So we're not gonna stick it to residents if we can avoid it. If it opens later and we, and we, if we can only stay open two weeks later, but it opens three weeks later, we would knock a week off. But we are trying to recover some of our costs because it's not cheap to run a pool, so we're trying to do whatever, again, accommodate our residents. And, and it's interesting, when you look at the numbers, they're all over the place and it's really weather. You know, if it's rainy like it was all last week, you would have no problems. It's gonna be those hot days, those, you know, early days too. And that's why I figured the first couple of few weeks, first two or three weeks, absolutely the most crowded of our pool. Regardless of weather, because people are excited to go. Then it calms down. And usually by August, you have a very minimal crowd anyway.
Hey Anthony?
Yes, sir.
One, I didn't think we could heat our pool anymore. I thought you sold both of those heaters.
No.
So you still have a heater?
Our heater for, our heater for, I'll call it the slide pool or the play pool. That's not operational. The other one is operational.
Okay. I know everybody's been focused on cleaning, but the CDC has announced that it's not really surfaces where people get this from, it's from other people. And
Yeah. And I, and they also say chlorine kills it and sunlight is also a good disinfectant as well. So, you know, if this was an indoor pool, I'd be, like the pair has got the lodge, it's kind of a larger complex indoor, outdoor. They're, they're much more concerned about their indoor pool than they are their outdoor pool. And that's not to say they're not worried about both. But I did read that same article, Sean.
When, when you get the county recommendations, I'd, I'd love to see a, an opinion from Hessel about it, just in terms of our liability of having a public pool open during a pandemic. We can do that.
Me too.
Has there been any consideration for senior hours?
No, but we could do something like that if the council would like. I think that's a good idea.
So if they're, Barry, are older, then they, they have their own special time?
That's right.
Perhaps.
We're special.
But
I know it's very popular at the grocery stores. My parents love it. They, they take full advantage of that.
Could we say vulnerable?
Yeah.
That there are folks that are immune compromised or have like asthma that are not older, but also have this, have similar risk factors?
Yeah, I think it'd be a good idea, personally.
We could even define what we mean by vulnerable age group and like you said, some of the medical issues.
And I think there's been, I mean, I, I'm sure that's defined somewhere in the CDC or in the county or whoever. Probably you could pull it from.
Yeah, we can, we can definitely do so.
Okay, is there any, any further discussion on pools?
Just a quick question related to the indoor pool at Richmond Heights. Do we have any update on, are they planning on keeping that closed?
I don't have an update on that, but I can find out and let you know, Sandy.
Okay, because that may impact how many people we have swimming labs.
I'll find out.
One other last question, Anthony, just, so can you just confirm these recommendations that are they coming from the County Department of Public Health?
Correct.
So have they been vetted by their epidemiologists? Assume that they have.
Correct, that's the assumption. I mean, they're, they're, they are, they, they handle all of our restaurants, any health, health-related issue in the county. They, all these municipalities refer to them and contract with them.
Okay. Then let's move on to our Budget Work Session. Review of the Public Works and Parks and Recreation Capital Accounts.
Eric Greenberg, if it's possible, I do wanna just give some good news here. We got our sales tax numbers in. And overall general fund numbers. Hold on, I'm sorry, I gotta go to the right email. We're up 17%, up 17% from last year. So that's excellent news. It's kind of what we were thinking might happen, hoping would happen. The only one I have broken out is essentially the Stanley Road South, which is basically Lowe's. And those, you know, the Red Lobster, the Twin Peaks and the Applebee's. And we know Red Lobster, Twin Peaks and Applebee's, we can surmise that they, they did not bring in the revenue they typically bring in because they were either closed or only doing curbside. And that, that Tiff District, sales were up 57%. So that tells you Lowe's sales were probably up somewhere around 60%, maybe even 65% increase just on the Lowe's alone. Another good indicator of the retail, which was kind of somewhat interesting is, is Beer Creek was only down 9%, which is surprising considering it's got a lot of non-essential retail. But you've got McAllister's, which does a lot of carryout business. You've got that Gordon Foods there. You've got some other, other businesses that, that did better than anticipated. So April is not necessarily a good bellwether. People get out and about a little bit more in, in May and June and July, so that's a little bit, gonna be a little bit more indicative. But this is very good news. I was, hopefully, I was actually hoping it would at least be even and it actually went up 17%. So general fund intake instead of 209,000 of April of 19, we went up to 244 April of 20. So it went up, went up 17%. So we'll continue to mon- monitor those numbers, but this is one we were watching very closely. And then we got good news. Sorry about that. I just wanted to make sure to get that out of the way, so I didn't forget. Did you say you wanted to go on to the Public Works Budget?
Yeah, but the, the same store sales must be astronomical if the, you know, if there's a 17% overall increase.
I think that Lowe's is a good indicator. I, I remember saying the Lowe's I've never seen so busy and it hasn't been that busy. At least as far back as we went, which was all the way to 15. If you go all the way back to 15, the Lowe's was at 62 versus 60. That's including you had three restaurants operating at full capacity. Or these three restaurants which are in that Tiff District were probably limping along with just carryout or being closed. So that Lowe's did, brought in more revenue probably than it ever has, so it's good to see. And then the rest of the overall numbers show that most likely the Walmart, the Sams, the all these in the Schnucks basically carried the rest of the city. So we were fortunate and we'll, we'll hope that continues.
Most of the Lowe's sales increase was due to my room addition, by the way.
Honestly, though, a lot of people were probably doing projects around the house, you know, because they were kind of stuck at home. So Lowe's business was booming.
Yeah, and I, I wanna, we can do this at another time, but I, I would, I was in Lowe's over the weekend and the previous weekend and it's a nightmare at best with people wearing masks and stuff. And I know they're private businesses, but it would seem to me that maybe we could enact some policy to require people to wear masks. I mean, it's just, it's, it was awful. Some Walmarts twice as bad.
Tell me there were really long lines too at Lowe's, so people are standing in there for a long time, probably without them.
The Lowe's wasn't that bad, but I noticed Menards had, either you wear a mask or they'll sell you one for a dollar. And, and everyone in, in Menards, for the most part, had a mask on.
Yeah, they won't let you in the store if you don't wear one at Menards. But like you said, a dollar, pretty reasonable for a mask.
Whether or not Lowe's can get a hold of masks, but I don't know if that's corporate policy or if it's based on Richmond Heights.
It's, that's Menards corporate policy.
I might have a conversation with Lowe's then, see what they plan to do. I've been, I've been in touch with their store manager quite a bit lately, so I'll ask him about that. But you're right, Sean.
Is Laura connecting with our businesses in general about how they're, they are working for their employees and guests following county guidelines about face coverings?
She's constantly in contact with them, sending them information. And I haven't, I have to benefit, one of the recent calls, so I can't say that they've talked about it recently, but I know they did in the past.
Okay, then let's move on to our Public Works Budget.
Okay, everyone, we talked a while ago about some of the changes we're gonna make for the general fund. A lot of them are similar to what we did. We moved, keep in mind that 2,400 account is typically our streets account. It's capital, half cent capital. You also see moved to 28, which everyone understands that's the Parks and Stormwater Capital because we're reviewing that tonight. So you can see we removed any capital items over. But the biggest change we did in the Public Works Budget is if you go to the Southeast worksheet. And then, of course, the corresponding Public Work or Parks Capital and Stormwater Accounts. You can see where we basically took portions of the, of the salaries out. Maintenance workers, we put in all of, all of our maintenance workers and all of our Public Works employees that basically operate out of the shop. 60% of their salary is coming out of the general fund. 40% would be coming out of the 2804 account. For myself, Assistant Director of Public Works, we cut that down to 80/20. But all those numbers could be higher if we need to in the future, but right now, we believe that this budget will be fine with these appropriate numbers. We figure about half of the maintenance, maintenance workers probably spend at least half their time in parks within Maplewood.
And are you looking to fill one maintenance worker position?
Well, we had two leave this year and one, I've got one right now. I can't really get into the specifics because he's got, it's a medical issue. And so we've been waiting and we were gonna hire one of our seasonal people. But but then we laid all, we, we furloughed all of them. So we, we're, we're still going down a year from where we were last year. That's just replacing somebody. So instead of being down two employees, we'll just be down one from last year.
I understand Richmond Heights laid off seven Public Works employees.
Was it laid off or furloughed?
Supervisor said laid off, but it might, you know.
And a lot of the, a lot of that has to do, ties into the, the maintenance and, and things of the heights right now. People with large recreation apartments like the Heights, the Lodge, the Center and Clayton, they're really having some major issues because they've got a lot of employees for a facility that's not open at all. We've actually been pushing our sewer lateral projects. been pushing our sewer lateral projects. We were at twenty nine and we're down to about fifteen in the last three weeks. I've got a crew working nonstop on that. So we're keeping all of our people busy.
Quick question about the, would you be able to give us a little memo later about kind of summarizing the the numbers of folks that are on furlough and if the furloughs are just like ninety day furloughs or just summary of those?
Yeah, I can, I can, I can do that. And I can just also tell you verbally right now, we have a jailer and
and you don't have to say kind of who or what the position.
Okay. We've got several that we did not give them a time because they're related to, for example, court, for example. And I'm not going to bring somebody back if the work is not there. So we didn't give, we didn't give, we gave, didn't give people exact date, how long it would be. Our summer work right now, I had three furloughed. We brought, we're going to bring two back because we believe we anticipate more and more people are going to be going to the parks. So we were down at one time, we were down seven, I think. We're down with the city manager position roughly. So we're down eight people. Right now we'll be down six. And I tell you right now, three of those will probably be through August.
And quick question about the the revenue stream connected to the half cent capital improvement. It's like, are these, are these moves from the general fund now sort of something that you're thinking about as like a permanent move or a temporary move? And then also the half cent, the revenues that come in from that, is that determined by local sales tax or state level sales tax?
Local. And I did, there is one, when I get to the twenty eight hundred account, I'll mention there's there's basically only one item in there that I would consider temporary, but the salaries for public works employees, this forty percent, twenty percent, that to me is going to be permanent. You need to, you need to provide relief. We eventually need to slowly, slowly build up that general fund balance to a more acceptable level. We have at least two million dollar fund balance in our twenty eight hundred account. And if you think of that twenty eight hundred account, I'll just go back to my history in the last thirteen years. We've added three parks. We've added Kellogg Park, Central, or pardon me, Sutton Loop Park and the skate park. I I foresee adding additional parks. That doesn't mean it won't come up, but we still have a fund balance if need be. We're going to be getting an additional four hundred thousand dollars revenue. Our last payment on the on the cool current pool complex is June twenty twenty one. So I'm roughly moving about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of salaries over and I'm going to be bringing in an additional four hundred thousand dollars worth of revenue from here on out. Another thing about the park thing, aside from the fact that I don't anticipate building any new parks or having any major capital expenses, a lot of these items you can get grants for and we need to apply for grants. So if I can get grants for something, I'm going to do so. And that's why I believe that we'll have a healthy fund balance in this account from here on out, because again, I think our parks are in pretty darn good shape right now and we can get grants for most everything. So we're going to, we're going to utilize that similar to what we do in Prop P for hiring police officers or the fire, the fire sales tax account, we do, we move people over there as well. This is a more appropriate method of budgeting and it also provides relief for our general fund.
You you would dedicate, oh, sorry, go ahead.
It's really that four hundred thousand dollars I'm going to be bringing in to where it's just, Karen, do you have anything to add to that? Karen?
No, I agree with everything you've said.
And you had indicated, I mean, this is something that many people do. And theoretically, I mean, if those people are working on those facilities, then we should be putting a portion of salary to that, right? I mean, that seems to make logical sense. And then there's going to be enough revenue because the pool bond or the, is that what it is where the other four hundred comes from? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yeah. So then revenue stream at least to cover the initial move.
Correct. And I mean, and if, if, for example, the, it was the, the reverse was true and our general fund was healthy, then I would obviously we can always, we can always adjust it accordingly. We just have to be able to adjust it to basically justify it. And that's why I said we actually, those are conservative numbers at forty percent and myself at twenty and and my assistant at twenty. Those are equally justifiable numbers that we've been monitoring over the last few years because I've been we put in the pool, we put in a pool hours two years ago. So we've been, this will be our third year with the pool hours, but we didn't do the park until just recently. And it is a usual and customary method of accounting.
Are we looking for, are we even able to ask for compensation for public works employees that have been, you know, for instance, constructing protection screens, things like that?
Yes, we're asking for anything that we believe is COVID related. For example, if anyone hasn't been to City Hall, we made a number of changes. We, we, like I've told you before, we've, we've shifted everyone's desks around. We got a lot of extra panels. So we increased everyone's space and gave them private space away from each other. We put plexiglass up. We've created a lot, added a lot of safety features. The mayor's allowed employees to use his bathroom to wash their hands. So we've got a hand washing station right by the front desk. We've opened up into the firehouse. We've created essentially employee only bathrooms, which is nice because then there's less contact. And we've basically closed off our public bathrooms as well. So we're, we've, I think our opening, we opened last Wednesday and it and it went very smooth. I've had several employees either email me or tell me personally, they appreciate what we've done. And we believe we'll get reimbursed if not for all of it, for the majority of it. And I'll actually, I'll send you an email I got from Karen Dilber's clerk. It was a very nice email. She she was very, very happy with what we did. I'll put it in the weekend review this this week. But yeah, we should be able to get everything reimbursed.
No, great. That's great.
Well, open up. I didn't ever know the exact date that you guys opened up.
Wednesday.
Wednesday. Okay.
The twentieth and we, the amount of foot traffic, if I had to guess, would be about a third of what we would typically get. And that's, that's one of the reasons I believe it was, I apologize, I think it was Eleanor that asked. Until we get, until there's a need for these employees, then we're not going to bring them back. We need to make sure everyone's busy. And we're at a good threshold right now where everybody's busy because because of the furloughs we did. So it kind of depend on, on what your, your job responsibilities are when you come back. If I had to guess, I would say at least three of them aren't coming back through August.
I noticed, was it Jeff Rask that was operating the street sweeper?
Yes, our building department inspections are essentially cut in half. So what we did is we took one of our two building inspectors and we moved them over into public works. Because we've got, we've got plenty of work there. It's the building department. It's obviously court. You know, those are the type, those are the areas that are very tight. And and one of the employees that's furloughed, scheduled all of our building inspections. And because they were cut in half, we had another one fill in. Our prosecuting assistant is furloughed and we've had our police clerk that's filling that role. We're basically shifting roles around to keep everybody busy.
I was able to get in into the street sweeper as it went by and it's pretty impressive. As opposed to the fire engine that was stalled in the parking lot over at Maplewood Commons.
I take it you saw that? Yeah.
Yeah.
That thing, it is, we have been having some major problems. We didn't buy that thing not a day too soon. Unfortunately, it's, we're still, I had to guess we're six months out, maybe more till we get the new one.
Right.
And our quick question that is related to this, but then I don't want to take us off budget too much, but do we have work at home options for our staff with kids who can't stay home independently, given that?
Any, anybody has the flexibility to do so. We Karen Dilber, I think, comes in Wednesday night and that's from home the entire time. The only thing when I say we're open is we just, we need to make sure we have three people here. For example, my assistant Tiffany never works at front counter, but she's there for a backup. We, we, we're still very limited and we have a number of people working from home and they do have that option. Absolutely, Eleanor. We're being extremely flexible with that.
Okay.
We really don't want more people at City Hall than need be.
So that was salaries. Where do we go next?
You know, we've kept the conference and travel and in the training, we realized that those are going to be wiped out, but we just kept those in there as a bookmark. Other than that, there's really nothing major in this budget. No major items really. It's been moved to the twenty four hundred account or twenty eight hundred account, which is the next one we can do. You can see though, overall, we basically had just a little under six hundred thousand dollars worth of savings, went from one point eight two one to one point two three four.
I had a one charge, the sixty four hundred, it's professional services. And it says partially moved to Fund twenty four, but it's eighty five hundred and the total was only like sixty four hundred. So I didn't know how much was moved, how much more was going to be in twenty four, the twenty four hundred fund and what the increase was caused by.
That's probably, honestly, that's probably a typo. Have to switch that out. It's probably, it's probably the less number. I'll find out and we'll get that. The only, the only things we can move partially would be something that would be related to an actual installation of a capital project. So if it's, if it's engineering services, for example, for a road project, we could take it, take that portion out of there. And Karen went through those figures and pulled out what the averages were. And that's where she got that number from. Karen, are you looking at that specific number?
Um, yes, I am. So for last year, we budgeted sixty four hundred, but I think the average was higher, which is why I said it was partially moved.
She took a five year average, right?
Right. Okay, so, so is eighty five hundred the total number? That's the amount that's remaining in this one and there'll be an additional because it, the the detail says partially moved. So I, that's why I was trying to understand too. If there was an, another amount that's moved to fun, what's that amount going to be?
I don't have that twenty four finalized, but I'll have that for you at the next budget work session. That's going to be out with revenues. That's the last account I'm doing because I'm wanting to see what's happening with this with this fire sales tax. Because that twenty four hundred, a little bit flexible. That's always the last one we typically do. I think I talked to you about that for the weekend. I'll find out what that number is and we'll have it at the next meeting.
Sounds good.
On the Regis number, there's, there's a lot of services that Regis provides. They were providing IT support. Is that included in the six zero forty four forty?
Um, in my research, all of the Regis expenses, with the exception of the police department and court, who were billed out separately because they had different contract contractual programs that they were being provided, they were all coming out of eleven oh two, which is the executive department. The prior, prior year, excuse me, amount that was budgeted under the line item for Regis wasn't really Regis. It was the Smart Gov annual maintenance. I think that was like fourteen thousand or something like that.
Correct. Then that's the, that's basically our building department software, Barry.
Thank you. Has there been any, you know, the streetlights are a major expense. Are there any grant programs available to replace? I know that they're replacing streetlights with LEDs as they, as the bulbs burn out, but we're still renting the, it's a recurring charge.
They looked at years ago, I want to say it was U City that did a big study and people all got together and they looked at it. And even though we believe Ameren is charging us too much money, an alternative to try to manage that on your own, the concern was it would work fine until you had a major storm or some sort of an emergency where Ameren had much greater capacity to bring in crews from all over the country to get your power back on. And that was really the concern is you know, three hundred and sixty five, three hundred and sixty three days out of the year, you could save a lot of money. But when your streetlights and your power is out or they're down for a long period of time, that's where we ran into some problems. And it just didn't make sense to try to have our own streetlights. Antique streetlights we have in town, those are our own streetlights and we do manage and maintain those and we do a pretty good job at that. But we do want to encourage Ameren and they have been actually making some real progress on swapping out from incandescent bulbs to or what are they, sodium to the LED. They've been swapping a few of those out. And that's why our numbers have kind of leveled off. Our energy costs have been, have been leveling off a little bit because they're using a lot less energy, which is a good thing. Any other questions in public works?
Are we into the regular public works? You mean the regular public works one?
Yeah, the one we're on right now, eleven oh, eleven oh six.
I just wanted to confirm that the same thing is cropping up that has cropped up before and probably the answer is going to be the same as before. The salaries have like a three percent increase. And is, is a salary bump that has already happened?
Over last year, you mean?
The numbers that are in this budget document are three percent.
It's the same thing that happened last year. That was.
Are in the budget document from last year.
Those were approved July first or July second, twenty nineteen. Those are not for next year.
So did we, did we do the same thing last year, approve budget, like salaries that were in the budget in twenty eighteen?
You approved the the budget, you approved the salaries last year, and then you also approved a three percent merit across the, across the board that was essentially distributed amongst the employees based on whatever the department had said. For the most part, they all got three. Some might have gotten a little more, some might have gotten a little less. But you basically approve one, a lump sum at three percent, at least this is what you did last year. This year, we're, we're not having any salary increases anywhere for any employee.
Unless someone gets a step.
Thank you.
So
you, can I, I mean, so I, and I sent you an email about this. Will you be able to send the breakdown of salaries from the twenty eighteen budget?
Sure.
By by person, back in those budgets, they weren't listed by person.
Wait, before he randomly yes commits to that, I'm not sure if my system can generate it. So it may take a little bit longer. Sometimes it's as of right now, as opposed to historical, like some of my reports come out that way. We can get the information, but it may not be something that I can easily generate, but we can get it for you. I just.
Okay.
Yeah, I can tell you the people you're asking about, they went up three percent in eighteen nineteen. Every single one of those, because I'm the one who approved those. They all went up three percent.
And so what you see in the budget is their, their base salary that they're making right now, unless they're newer and they're entitled to a step. So nobody's getting any type of merit increases. It's what people are making right now, again, unless they're entitled to a step.
Would it, would it be possible to someone provide sort of like, at some point in the future, like a memo, kind of like who's entitled to a step and like what that percentage is every year? Because I think that Cause I think that's where I get a little confused because I think I'm guessing, you know, I, I saw on the budget last year, we approved 27,646 in merit increases, which I think is reflected in these numbers. Which is what Eleanor was asking. You add up that increase from last year, it's actually like 32,165. I'm guessing the discrepancy is.
That's exactly what it is. Anyone, anyone that's, that's, you, you're brought in at a, at a level, you're basically brought in at the lowest level. That step increased is basically one-fifth of whatever the difference is between the bottom of the scale and the top of the scale. And, and that's what your merit increase is. So everybody's is different based on what salary is. Every now and then someone will be brought in at like a, maybe a mid-range. Because, um, maybe they have a lot more experience and the city manager made the decision, hey, this person might be making X dollars at their current job, but I really want this person here. So they bring them in at the mid-range. And so therefore it would only be instead of a 20%, it would be 10%, but years to reach your, your max, basically. Once you've been here five years, unless it's possible, you, you don't get the step. I mean, if you're, if you're underperforming, you, you're not going to step. I mean, that's happened. But for 85% of the people, if you're here five years, you don't, then you've already, you've maxed out. You're not getting a step anymore.
So, so can you share with us that schedule of ranges and staffs?
Sure.
Thank you.
The utility numbers that are shown here are those for the, uh, public works garage or city hall or both?
That's public works garage.
Okay.
City Hall is charged to the executive department.
Are we planning on any new vehicles, uh, for the upcoming year for public works?
One pickup truck.
Is that the one that we approved?
No, it's a different one.
Okay.
It'll be taken, uh, 2,800, you'll see it on the next budget. We go through half, half out of that and half out of the 2,400 account.
So are there any other, uh, any other questions on the numbers?
For just public works, do you mean? Or for all of them?
Just public works.
Okay. No.
Are you guys ready to go to 28?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Um, within this account, you've obviously got four different account. You got 2801, two, three, and four. 2801 is essentially just the pool bonds. The 400 roughly, roughly, that's why the, this is where I keep getting that number roughly 400,000 for the pool bonds. And you'll see on the work form under 2801, the last payment of the pool bonds is scheduled for June of 2021. That one's self-explanatory. And I think we've already talked about that. 2802. The interesting thing here is if you look at the salaries, you can see where we, that's the remainder that we talked about essentially the, the 40% of the maintenance crew or the 20% of the admin crew. 2803 is essentially your pool. The only really item of interest, there's, there's probably a couple. Our camera system there is extremely old. We're probably going to be replacing that in the fall or spring. Winter, we can do that in the off-season. We will. And you'll see this 5% matching portion of the, um, the splash pad. It's about a $200,000 project roughly, and we got a grant for that to pay 95% of it. So, um, those are really the only items of interest that I can think of, that I can see in the pool. If anyone has any questions on that, please let me know.
How many cameras are, are we talking about here?
We're talking about just cameras in the lobby. And possibly one out on the pool deck. We're not, I'm not totally sure. Um, the police are getting estimates for it right now. It would hook up to our current system. The one we have right now doesn't. It just kind of records. It's a, I don't know if you want to say the old convenience store camera that you'd see. I mean, that's basically what it was. It's, um, the only place I care about it is. But I don't have an estimate now. That's just, that was just a rough number. Oh, I'm sorry. We also had one outside in the front too. Angled towards the parking lot. And, uh, actually I think we had three. We had one at the bike racks too.
Does tech take care of the, uh, security cameras?
Um, they do. Uh, tech, and then there was another, uh, I can't think of the name of the company. It changed names. Karen, whose company Cruz had so much trouble with?
Oh, I can't remember.
Yeah, they've changed names like three times.
Can, can we defer our, our payments to tech for about 10 years?
That'd be nice. Tech comes in and, and see that the problem is tech, we didn't buy them from tech and the, the company we have, right? That it's got some proprietary information that we have to bring them in any, every now and then. I wish I could think of the name. They've changed names twice in the last three years. It was initially a reputable company and then, and we've had a lot of problems. So whenever we can avoid them, we bring tech in. Sometimes we can't avoid them.
Maybe our interns will be able to take care of those.
Yeah. Well, that, one of the problems was especially with the, the cameras in the parks, we had a lot of problems was the, uh, basically the, the signal, the, uh, because they're, 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 they're basically wireless cameras. And so we had a lot of problems with those for, for many, many years. We think we've gotten it replaced. We got them worked on better, but in the interim, we, we realized we, we didn't like the company and we've been trying to use tech whenever possible. They do excellent work.
And are, sorry, can you just, are we on, are just on 2803 right now?
Uh, we can go to whatever one you want.
I just wanted to make sure I was following along.
Yeah, that's where I, that's where I last was.
I have a question on the, uh, 2803, Anthony.
Yes, sir.
I know some of the cities have decided, I, I don't want to regurgitate the, uh, pool opening discussion, but I know that some of the cities that stated that they were not opening their pools this year was their rationale that they gave was that, um, the cost to open the pool far exceeded what they were going to bring in. Has there been any analysis of that in terms of?
Uh, yeah, we just, we just did, uh, actually hold on, let me go to it. One of our, one of their biggest concerns, the ones that, that are closing, their concern was getting lifeguards too. And, and they, what they were going to have to pay the lifeguards because they didn't know when it would open and when it wouldn't. And so we have a, we have a company, we have a contract with them, Midwest Pool Services. They're already essentially, they already have that personnel in place. So it's not, the, the municipalities that typically contract that out are opening, the ones that would have to hire their own employees. And of course there are exceptions, aren't. Hold on, let me find this. This does not include the, the heights cost, which we're going to get to, but based upon the pool, last season revenues received 245, 824. Uh, we were paid out 101, 548. We had a net of 144, 275. Um, it's going to be almost impossible, Ray, to predict right, what our revenues are going to be.
Sure.
Why we're trying to extend the, the length of the pool to be a full season. So we don't have to prorate this if at all possible.
Right. Um, well, we're talking about lower, lower, um, capacity, which is going to bring down the revenues and
Correct.
potentially, uh, shorter season than we don't know.
Doing an, yeah, to do a hardcore analysis, I mean, it's going to, it's, it's really going to almost be, it's going to be a guesstimate. Because I, I mean, I don't know how many people we're going to have. I mean, whether there's a rush on it because people just want to get out or people are concerned about it. But we anticipate again, based on what they're talking about at St. Charles, that we'll get a typical, fairly typical crowds. And if we need to, again, bring in Brentwood, bring in Rock Hill, bring in the city, we're convinced we can absolutely meet whatever the capacity threshold is. Um, no matter what, we don't make, make much money off recreation. That's why you have that dedicated, uh, right, tax. And if I, if I, if I didn't have, some of these cities don't have a fund balance. That's another problem.
Sure.
From Martin, they don't have, or they don't have a dedicated half-cent sales tax for it. And so they're talking about dipping in the general revenues, which we're not going to have to do.
Well, in a large part of the 200, you know, the budget for next year, 236,000, largest part of that is committed, whether you open or not. It's, it's money you're going to spend whether you open or not. So.
Okay. Another reason why we're, you know, we're looking at paying our, instead of having to pay Midwest Pool additional money to do the cleanup. That's why we're going to bring in a summer helper to basically be planted at the pool. It's much cheaper to do so, uh, as opposed to paying, uh, Midwest Pools, right? So, um, we're definitely going to be doing some of that, but right now it's, and we don't even have all the criteria yet from the county.
Sure.
What kind of the problem?
Yeah.
So, and, and that's another thing. A lot of people, it's, it's, it's going to be a hassle for staff to get this thing up and rolling, but, um, not saying that's why some people aren't doing it, but, right.
Would you? Would you say the majority of the electrical, uh, utility cost is for the pumps?
Yes.
Wow. When, when was that? Didn't we replace that equipment recently? The pumps?
We replaced the chlor- the chlorinators was a big one. We just did last year. It was like $60,000. That's probably what you're thinking.
Okay.
We've, uh, this, this, and we also cleaned out those sand filters. That was a big, major overhaul. But, uh, no, we have not replaced those. Those pumps are, if you ever go into the pump room, they're, they're massive. And so another thing the county is wanting people to do, and, and I don't know if it's been decided, but they're wanting you to basically get the pool up and running and operational. And then even if you're not going to open it, you gotta basically winterize it again afterwards too. That's another. And I think they're saying for mosquito purposes or some other issues, but that these are some of the, the rules of kind of, there's been a lot of discussions. I'll just be interested to see what they're going to, what, what they're going to do Friday. But again, at least they've given us that direction so far. And they're trying to give us as much as, as they can. It's just such a fluid process. Uh, that I'm not faulting the county for that, but it is making it a little difficult to come up with some of those numbers, right?
Are, are you saying when you say they're making you get it ready? Are you saying they're telling you have to fill it even if you're not going to open it?
That was the discussion about two weeks ago. I'm not sure if they've stuck with that or not, but they were saying.
Seems like a lot of water to waste.
We usually leave ha- at half-full anyway, Jenny, though. Uh, we winterize it. That's a good way to winterize it. So it's not quite as bad as it sounds, but uh, and you also want to, so if, if you notice it's empty now, that's just because we power washed it and did some painting. But it's full or half-full. I don't know, probably 10 months out of the year, all winter. Provides insulation.
Yeah. So it doesn't buckle like it did one year after we first got the pool.
Yeah. They say some of those pools can actually float, kind of pop out if you're not careful. That one, I don't have any concerns with, but yeah, it, it's definitely.
You gotta deep water in it. Yeah.
I don't know if I told you, but our, our, uh, city hall ducks are back. So that's good news. They're, they're outside my office right now. But they used to go to that pool, Jenny. It was pretty funny. If we didn't have our, uh, leaf guard pulled off the front of city hall pond, they'd be sitting out in the pool waiting for us to, uh, take the leaf guard off the pond. Um, you guys are okay with that? And if not, we can always come back to 2804. Um, our park, the park bus right now, we've had, it's, it's basically, it's going to be replacing the, the, the larger one and, um, we have something like 90,000 miles on it. They're hard miles. We've had major maintenance issues over the past three or four years. They're recommending that we replace that. The next item is one that I said that will probably not be in future, but we can always do that. With the Parks and Stormwater Sales Tax Fund, anything that carries stormwater, which could basically be your curbs and gutters for your streets rights away, can be, um, used for that. The next, the reason I did it this year, and I don't plan on doing it most likely next year, is I'm trying to protect the 2,400 account a little bit. That's going to be our streets account because we've got about a half a million dollars in there for the railroad gates at Sutton and Greenwood. And both of those will basically, that's basically a one-time cost. So I wanted to make sure I could still do some roads this year. And so I've taken, uh, basically the curbs and gutters, the portion on the streets, uh, and the right-of-way restoration for the 2804 this year. That's an option you can do every year. If you decide you may want to do more roads and you have the money in the parks, um, you can use that for the, um, the curbs and gutters. But I don't anticipate doing that next year, but, um, that's why I think it's going to be a one-time cost, but I'm doing that primarily because I can't, because I don't want to totally deplete my 2,400 account. Um, and then Barry, you had asked about a truck earlier, I believe. Uh, this is a three-quarter ton replacement truck. And I think the next one to go would be the green one that you guys have seen. That's, uh, I think it's a, uh, I think it's a 98. It's in pretty bad shape.
Is this the truck we just approved purchase for?
This is not. This is a next, this is a truck for next fiscal year.
This was in, there was, this line item was in the budget last year. Did we not buy one last year? Or is this a?
You, you approved it at the last council meeting, um, this fiscal year. This would be, uh, after July 1st.
No, but I'm saying our budget, the 2019, 20 budget had the same line item in it. So.
We, we approved that truck.
So that's the truck you're, that's the one we just did. Okay.
Yeah.
And that's the one, that's the one we just did, but we're going to do a second one next year.
I got it. Yep.
That was, you guys replaced the Ford Ranger on that, right?
Yeah, we replaced, it was a 96 Ford Ranger.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, we've probably got, after this Ford Ranger, we probably have two really bad trucks left. Uh, the second one is a 98. I can't think of what it is, but you've seen it. It's the green truck we drive around to the parks.
Yeah.
Again, once these, once these, these, these are so old, once they have problems, it's not even worth putting any money into them.
If you, uh, if you hang on to it for a few more years, then you can get it.
If you, if you hang on to it for a few more years, then you can get some historic vehicle plates for them. It's true.
Yeah.
You get a, you get a credit for that, don't you? You don't have to get them inspected anymore.
No, I I don't, I don't know. All I can say is they're in pretty bad shape, but we're getting close on our, on our trucks, which is good. We got the street sweeper. Everyone knows where that was. The only major item we have, which are probably being a 24 is a front loader, which we've which right now it's just that thing is probably if I had to guess 25 or 30 years old. And other than that, public, for the most part, their 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 equipment. I'd say their equipment at two years from now should be in all, should be in pretty darn good shape. We replaced the leaf, leaf vacuum, if you remember, probably three years ago. So we're really making some, some progress in these cent capital sales tax accounts have really really been the the reason we've been able to do so.
Is the park bus, is that a shared expense with Richmond Heights? Do they reimburse us for?
They have one and we have another one.
I got it.
And they have one. This is, this is the one we need to replace. They replaced one probably years ago. This is the one that we brought into the agreement. And just so everyone's aware, they actually do all the maintenance in house in Richmond Heights. So it's pretty nice. All we have to do is basically pay a minimal amount for labor and parts. So it works out really well. It's a, it's a fantastic partnership. The next page, you've got Ryan Hummer Park. You'll notice this is the 2804. It's got the specific account number 70184. You'll see it's $87,000.
Yay, I can't wait till you resurface that park. It's awful.
That's a huge chunk of it. We're also going to be adding, this is per the park boards recommendation, we're going to be adding three 25 foot oak trees. And we're going to be adding three sunshades for Deer Creek Park. We're going to also irrigate the upper portion of Ryan Hummer Park. And back down to Deer Creek, we're going to get, we're going to get new lighting system. It's called the Musco Lighting System. Richmond Heights uses it. I think they're AB Greenfields and it's it's nice because we can save a lot of energy because we get, it's constantly a battle to get these teams to turn the lights off. They leave them on. It doesn't matter how many times, doesn't matter if we take deposits, they still do. It's just they just forget. It's not intentional. But this will be a system that we can operate remotely and it works out well because there are occasions when somebody can't get in one way or another. We've basically got to pay somebody overtime to run them down there. So this is for $7,500, we'll be able to get a nice remote lighting system and we'll be able to do that. And we can also set timers on it as well, which will be nice. It'll make it much, it'll, it'll save a lot of angst as well amongst the staff up at Richmond Heights. Tree inventory, that's our matching portion. We've already talked about that as well a while back. Tennis court slash retaining wall replacement, that is a monster cost $400,000, but everyone has seen the court. We've seen the retaining wall leaning. That bid opening is supposed to be for the retaining wall, June 3rd. So once that's done, we'll move right into the retaining wall. And then I've got a under skateboard park. That's for a a water fountain for the kids that are at the skate park. That's a, that's something we anticipated, but if you remember, we were kind of maxed out and we said we could put that in later. So that's what we're trying to do here for those kids that are using that skate park. I know that water fountain is going to get a lot of use. Does anyone else have any other additional questions on that?
What, what's the walking trails? Division, did I?
I'm sorry.
Blink out on that.
No, I'm sorry.
Is that to help with the flooding?
No, no, it's it's unrelated. That those are two separate projects. But it's interesting you bring that up because with all the projects upstream that are that are happening, it's going to be a benefit to Maplewood because they're essentially, I believe when it's done, Deer Creek will essentially be taken out of the floodplain, which is a a huge benefit to Maplewood and specifically to the owners of that project. But we are, we, we, we've been waiting for a no rise certificate from GRG. It's their trail, but in our agreement, we maintain it and a portion of the trail is falling into the 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 watershed. And so we're basically going to go have to dig it back and stabilize it and put some rip rapids. It's a major project that we're going to pay for that portion of it. But we're not gonna, I'm not gonna, I've told them, I'm not going to prove it until I see that no rise certificate. I don't want this to create a problem further downstream. They're working on it right now. We believe we'll get it. But basically Jenny, really Councilmember Schmidt, what that is, is to to essentially stabilize a portion of the creek that's falling into the watershed. And that's the only thing that's holding us back right now is that no rise certificate. And just so you're aware, we agreed to the city as part of that GRG trail, as we agreed to maintain it up until the point where we decided we don't want to maintain it anymore. We're not necessarily obligated to it, but it's obviously a tremendous asset to the community. It gets utilized all the time. So we want to make sure we stabilize it. I believe that's it. Does anyone else have any questions on any of the 2800 accounts? Okay. If it's possible, can I move on to find out when we want to schedule our next meeting? I I know, I think, I think it was the fourth at 7:30, I think, was the last I'd heard. I just want to make sure we're all on the same page.
That's what I have.
Okay. And for that, our spectacular finance clerk is going to do a wonderful, exciting revenues presentation for you. I'm sure you guys are all on pins and needles about that. So and like I said, these April numbers are are good news and let's hope we have a fire sales tax approved. And then we'll look at that 2,400 account. We will have an overall draft or budget ready for everyone. That'll be going out to you that weekend and will be posted online for people to comment. We'll have the public hearing on the ninth. And I, and I did talk with Councilmember Schmidt about trying to stay on schedule and I correct me if I'm wrong, Councilmember Schmidt, you agreed with with what we were trying to do. We're, we're trying to make sure we meet the criteria for the distinguished budget award. So we definitely want to try to get this budget approved before the end of this fiscal year, which would be on June 23rd.
Yeah, and that I agree with that. I just wanted to suggest to the group that maybe since the budget is going to be out like two days before we're going to have a public hearing, that maybe it would be worth it to schedule a work session in between.
We can absolutely.
That and our final vote so that people have a chance to really ask meaningful questions about it. So I would open for that.
If the council wants to schedule it, Karen and I will make ourselves available.
Like another work session?
I just, I think it makes sense to have some discussion not at the meeting where we're going to have a vote at it because then it seems sort of too late at that point. That would be my suggestion.
Yeah, that's no problem at all.
Do we have to space out? Do we have to do a, like a first, second, like, do we have to do votes at two separate meetings?
Yes, and that's why the ninth is critical because we'll be doing a first and second reading at the ninth. And then a third and final approval on the 23rd, but between the ninth or the fifth or whenever we posted online and a third, we can revise this budget however you see fit. I don't anticipate any major revisions because we've gone through each line item. Or nor do I anticipate any earth shattering public comments, but we do have the ability to hold as many meetings in between the ninth and the 23rd as your schedule permits.
And so we, just to clarify, so the, the estimated the non certified results of the election will come in on June 2nd. And then, and we'll have the first, our next work session on the fourth. When we get the draft that we're going to talk about on the fourth?
When will you get it?
Yeah.
Honestly.
Get it on the third or do we get it before?
It'll probably be on the third because Karen and I are going to be or, you know, we could, we could hopefully get something sooner, but we need to get it before that. Let me take a look at this. We'll send you something probably on Monday, give you a few days on that. And and again, the only new thing you're going to see really are going to be revenues and the it it should all be very similar. Now, there'll be like a change, one that I know that I made subsequent to this is when you get the, I can't think of what the police prop P money is, but we've got the we got the renovations to the city hall fire department, which we started this this fiscal year, but they're going to wrap up next fiscal year. I'm probably going to take more out of Prop P because I'm, instead of the 2,400 account, which is what I was initially wanting to do because they have a fund balance as well. So you may see a couple of, like, you may see one line item change here or one there, and we'll highlight what those are. So there's no, I have to go back through the entire budget again.
Thank you.
Exactly what we changed. So instead of looking at every item, you look at one, one line item, I'll explain it. And hopefully it'll be a relatively quick review, Councilmember Pardini. So I anticipate probably sending it out on Monday. I know it's a little time crunch, but again, we still have additional sessions if need be.
And then for the public on the Friday?
The public will definitely have to, will definitely have it. Probably the same time, I'll probably advertise it on the first, whenever I get it to you is when the public will see it. Karen? Or, I mean, does that sound reasonable? Because you've still got the revenues to work through. The first seem okay?
The first, I can get those. Yeah, I can get those done by the first. So I guess my question is, you were talking about getting the public the information at the same time. Are we just reviewing the Fund 24 and the revenues next time or are we reviewing the entire budget?
Actually, I I apologize. I'm not, I apologize, Eleanor, I misspoke. We would get the council, the budget on the first, we would review it on the fourth. On the Friday, Karen and I will refine that and put out the council packet for the ninth. And when that goes out is when we'll post that budget with our council packet online on the fifth. I apologize. I misspoke.
That's all doable. I just wanted to make sure we were on the same page.
I misspoke. Thanks for correcting that.
And so my original thought was that, you know, we've, we've broken this budget down over six weeks or whatever. It's a lot of information. So if someone in the public really wanted to read it and ask questions, three days is really not a lot of time. And so I just thought it'd be nice to give, set aside an hour even just that we may not have any questions, just to set aside an hour to allow people to a little more time to look at it and ask questions.
I think it's an excellent idea. And just to let the rest of the council know, when I had my conversation with Councilmember Schmidt, I, I think it was, I think it was understood, but if it wasn't, I, we would, Karen and I would typically have this, we would typically like to be holding this public hearing in May, okay? And then or at least, you know, have the, have the budget out there in May. We got setback a little bit with with this COVID issue. And so we're, we've got you in a tight window here and it was obviously not intentional. But unfortunately, circumstances dictated, it's a little later than normal. So next year, you know, if all things were normal, I would have assumed we would be having our public hearing at our last or tonight, actually, the 26th of May or possibly even as early as May 15th, at least have a draft, a final draft to you. And that was our initial goal, but with everything setback, unfortunately, we didn't get there. But I still think we're, we're fine time wise. It's just going to be a little tighter, unfortunately, on all of your schedules. But Karen and I will meet whenever you need us.
Thank you.
Yeah, we appreciate, Mariah, I appreciate your guys' work on this.
Yeah, I think, yeah, this is, you've, you both have done a phenomenal job. I really appreciate you taking us through these and your presentations and answering, being available questions like this has been great.
And then one final thing, we're talking about the the pretty presentation, the charts, the graphs, things of that nature for when we submit to the, for the GFOA distinguished budget award. Karen, can you correct me if I'm wrong? When is that due? It's it's not due for a few months after?
Correct. We have six months after the start of our fiscal year to submit it to the GFOA. I have two people who are currently working on a template. They have to get me something that is very rough by the end of June. So, you know, we have different goals that that we're trying to meet internally, but we should have our pretty one with the graphs and the the charts and we have to have a lot of statistical information and kind of a glossary in the back that explains what the different terms mean, very user friendly. We have six months it to submit that one. So the one that you get on the fifth is not going to be that pretty.
Bringing it up, it's going to be kind of ugly.
Yeah, but but it'll, it'll be factual. It's just, you know, not going to be the super pretty one with all the, you know, great explanations and and charts and and things like that that's super user friendly. We are working on it.
I just wanted to make that, thanks for pointing it. I just wanted to make sure you understood that's because I know we said we were going to get there and we will. It's just, we're worried about the numbers right now. We're worried about making sure you're all aware of where the money's going. And then, like you said, the user friendly and and adding the charts and graphs. I think you guys probably mentioned that to me probably early on in November, a couple of you I met with. And so we will definitely get there.
I'm just excited you're working on it. So I don't, at this point, when you, you know, I'm just excited. We're moving in that direction.
Well, Councilmember Schmidt, you should make a motion that this done by June 15th. That work? No, it's going to be, it's going to look nice. I think Tiffany and Tanya are working on that right now, right? Yeah. And then I think the the format we're going to use, I think Karen can tell you similar to Richmond Heights because that uses a a lot of Excel and a lot of Word. It allows you to drop that in and it's a nice document. So if anyone wants to see what we're thinking, it's going to look like that'll be it. But that's coming for everyone, just to make sure they're aware.
We're actually pulling elements from Richmond Heights and from the city of DePere. We liked both of those budgets very much. So I've had them go through, actually, all three of us have gone through and pulled different elements from there that we think we can do in the timeframe that we have and that we would like to see. So.
And if you look at, please look at those cities, don't look at others because some of the other cities have a separate financial software package that throws it together in a particular format that we won't be able to do with what we have. So that's why we're picking those two also. Does Karen, do you have anything else that you got that you want to add?
One last thing is a mayor's report. Best of luck, Jenny, for you and your daughter coming up on the third.
Yeah.
And hope everything turns out well.
Thank you.
Does any other council members have any questions?
I do not.
No.
Good luck, Jenny.
Thank you. I'm just more scared about going in hospital and staying in a hotel, you know. For you. I'm sure they are, Sandy. Yes, you're.
Especially IHG Hotels.
Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
You have a motion and second, all those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? The work session is adjourned. Thank you very much. Did a great job.
See you guys later. Thank you.
Thank you.
Everyone, good night.
Bye.